Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. I apologize for the delay in getting started here. We've got a number of bills we're dealing with today. Merrick Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. To my immediate left, Vice Chair, Councilman Isaac Gitsi Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee. Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee. Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee. And we're also joined by Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. We also have representatives from the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. We're going to start off first with Council Bill 24- and Nia Garrett, to my immediate right staff to the Committee, my apologies, the most important person in the room. First up, Council Bill 24-0560, Sale of Property 1012 East 43rd Street. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
That's very lucky with the Law Department, we approved for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. DHCD favorable?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we stand behind our favorable report.
Thank you. Department of Finance, not opposed?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Planning favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Good to see you, Mr. Tezo.
I'm in the wrong spot, sorry.
That's okay. Department of Real Estate favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights favorable?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions for members, for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this specific matter? Again, this is sale of property at 1012 East 43rd Street. Any, you wish to testify on this matter? Please come on up. Make sure you press the button on the bottom right, once your ring lights up red. And please state your name and any organization affiliation for the record.
Good morning, my name is Angela Kadani, and I'm the co-founder of Scarlet Covering Inc., which owns Kid Stuff Childcare Center. And I thank you so much for hearing me this morning. Thank you so much to all of the Committee, who has taken the time to review this bill, and to say yes to it. So Kid Stuff Childcare Center will operate that facility for children with disabilities, and this property will allow us to have safe unloading and loading zones for children with disabilities.
Thank you for attending today, and for your great work in the community, appreciate it. Any other members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Seeing that there are none, colleagues, is there a motion to move this bill favorably? Motion by Burnett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton, Costello is a yes, Burnett? Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Give me one second. Costello is a yes, I said that. Stokes and McCray are absent.
Better.
Better? All right. I will say it with my chest, moving forward. Yeah. All right, we're going to go into recess on this matter, we'll come right back to it. Council Bill 24-0561, repeal of ordinance 99-573 as amended by ordinance 00-093, planned unit development 4221 Shannon Drive. Law Department, I see you've got comments? It says favorable with comments?
Oh, is that mine, or is it Elena's?
I have no idea, I don't work at the Law Department.
I don't have 561, I don't think, so...
This is Elena's?
It might be.
Okay, Elena's tied up, we'll go into recess on this matter. Council Bill 24-0570, city property, naming the playground located at Lake Montebello to be the City Council President Mary Pat Clark Playground. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
We approve for legal form and sufficiency.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. Department of Finance, not opposed?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Planning favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Transportation, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. Raccoon Parks favorable?
Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office, standing there for Raccoon Parks, yes.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Seeing that there are none, I will very briefly turn it over to Councilwoman Ramos, if she'd like to provide comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues. I do want to note, there is a tiny amendment on your desk, to remove the word "city" from City Council President, just to make it consistent with what Raccoon Parks has on the sign. I don't really need to say a lot. Councilmember Clark and Council President Clark is well-deserving of this honor to name the playground, the new playground at Lake Montebello after her. She serves, she's still with us, she actually slid down that slide when we dedicated the playground to her. She's doing great, and I want to just make sure that we're honoring her as much as we can, to, because she is really a legend in her time, here in Baltimore City, helping so many residents, both in our district and citywide. And so, when people will, you know, look at the sign and go, "Who was Councilwoman Clark?", or Council President Clark, they will see that she was the first woman to serve as Council President in our city, that she was the first woman to run and win citywide, and she really paved the way for so many of us. So I'm honored to be able to name this playground after her, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues, for your consideration of this bill and the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, colleagues. There's an amendment on our desks, which removes the word "city" from the title and from the body. Is there a motion to move that amendment?
Motion.
Motion by Middleton, second by Burnett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Amendment passes. Colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
Motion.
Motion by Middleton, second by Burnett. Costello is a yes, Burnett?
Yes.
We're going to go into recess and come back to this one as well. Council Bill 24-0571, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 730 East Preston Street. Law Department?
Michelle Toth, on behalf of the Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency.
Did Law Department have comments on this as well, or no?
I looked at 561, and I don't see any comments on the bill.
This is 571, not 561.
I know, but the last one we were talking about...
But I'm, 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 I don't mean to be rude, just ask about 571. Are there any comments in addition to being approved?
I don't believe so.
Was this your?
No.
Okay. All right, we're going to go into recess for a minute. Okay, we're going to start back from the top. Council Bill 24-0560, sale of property 1012 East 43rd Street. We have already heard from our agencies, there was no public test, there was one, that was you, right? That was one piece of public testimony on this matter. There was a motion by Burnett, and a second by Middleton. Burnett, you're making that motion, move the bill favorably? Okay. Middleton, you second that? Okay. Costello is a yes, Burnett?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Okay. And then Dorsey, Stokes, and McCray are absent. This bill moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. All right, next. Council Bill 24-05, Elena? Council Bill 24-0561, repeal of ordinance 99-573 as amended by ordinance 00-093, planned unit development 4221 Shannon Drive. Law Department approves for form and legal sufficiency. I note in here that there are comments from Law Department. Does Law Department have anything to add to this matter?
No.
It's approved for form and legal sufficiency. Excellent. Is there a motion to move this bill favorably? There's, motion by Burnett, second by Middleton. Costello is a yes, Burnett? Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Okay. Dorsey, Stokes, and McCray are absent. This bill moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. So we got two done. Okay. Next up, Council Bill 24-0570, city property, naming the playground located at Lake Montebello to be the City Council President Mary Pat Clark Playground. This bill was previously amended a few minutes ago. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended? Motion by Middleton, second by Burnett. Costello is a yes, Burnett?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Middleton? Okay. McCray, Stokes, and Dorsey are absent. This bill passes and moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Next up, Council Bill 24-0571, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 730 East Preston Street. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes.
Anything to add?
No.
Excellent. DHCD favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
BDC favorable?
Favorable.
Planning Commission favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
BMZA defers to Planning Commission, correct?
Yes.
Parking Authority of Baltimore City favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Fire Department, no objection?
Yes.
Department of Transportation, no objection?
No objection.
Excellent. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Seeing that there are none, is there a motion to move this bill favorably? Motion by Middleton, second by Burnett? Second by Burnett, yep, that's what I thought I heard. Costello is a yes, Burnett?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Okay, this bill passes with four ayes and three absences, and moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Council Bill 24-0573, repeal of ordinance 04-824, planned unit development 1901 Light Street, 1921 Light Street, Bed of Johnson Street, and Block 1947 Lot 1. Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. BDC favorable?
Favorable, Mr. Chair.
Planning Commission favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Transportation, no objection?
No objection.
Excellent. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to move this bill favorably, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton. Costello is a yes, Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
This bill passes with five ayes and two absences, moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Council Bill 24-0574, rezoning 1921 Light Street. Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency with the finding of facts?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I believe we have Mr. Wolman on behalf, Mr. Wolman? If you can make your way to the front on findings of facts on the rezoning of 1921. Department of Housing and Community Development, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation, favorable?
Favorable, Mr. Chair.
Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and we believe we have findings of fact included in our staff report for your use.
Excellent. Do you want to quickly run through those, or would you prefer Mr. Wolman?
I'll defer to the applicant's attorney.
Excellent. BMZA defers to planning?
Yes.
Parking Authority Baltimore City, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Transportation, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. Mr. Wolman, can you run us through the statement of findings of fact?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. For the record, Joe Wolman Silverman Thompson, on behalf of the applicant. Regarding the findings of fact required for the rezoning, our site from the memorandum we submitted to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission, as Mr. Tezo already indicated, has also delivered its report regarding findings of fact. Change in the character of the neighborhood, which as you know is one of the two tests required for the rezoning, in the past seven-plus years since the last comprehensive zoning of the neighborhood, has experienced significant change as an ever-evolving market for mixed use of multifamily residential uses has increased the demand for C1 zone property in the area. In 2020, the property directly across the street at 1900 to 1916 Light Street was rezoned from R8 to C1 per City Council Bill 20-0619. I would refer you to the language from the planning staff report accompanying that bill in 2020. Well Street, which is the Well Street quarter around the corner from this site, has been redefined within the past several years with the construction of several new multifamily apartment buildings that have added several hundred residential units to the neighborhood. In addition, numerous formerly vacant properties have been renovated and are now used for residential and commercial purposes. Most recently, there are currently under construction additional multifamily apartment buildings, two blocks to the west on Henworth Street that will bring several hundred additional residential units to the neighborhood. We submit that these changes in the character of the neighborhood described have continued to evolve even further, excuse me, over the past four years. With regard to mistake in the existing zoning classification, prior to the last comprehensive rezoning, the site was zoned R8. It's unclear how this zoning designation was selected, but it does appear to be generally incompatible with the existing historic building form and industrial uses since the properties were first developed in late 19th century. The R8 designation fails to provide for a reasonable reuse of the historic buildings due to the restrictions placed upon the bulk requirements and permitted uses. The City Council failed to take into account this fact as it existed at the time and was mistaken in the selection of R8 rowhouse zoning for a non-rowhouse property. With that, I'd submit that as the basis for findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Wolman. Colleagues, are there any questions for Mr. Wolman? Okay, no questions for our city agencies, and we asked if there's any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Wolman.
Thank you.
We will consider the adoption of the finding of facts at the next full council meeting. In the meantime, colleagues, is there, I'm going to move this bill favorably, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton. Costello, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
This bill passes with five ayes and two absences, and moves to the second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Okay, so that's... Okay, by a quick show of hands, who is here for Hartford Road? Pop your hands up. Stand up for me, if you don't mind, please, and thank you. I just want to get a head count and make sure I see... Okay, thank you very much. By, if you could stand up if you're here for Amtrak-related bills? Stand up for me, please, just so I can get a hand count. I saw you, young lady. All right, I got you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to go into recess right now. It's 10:38 a.m. We're going to hopefully reconvene in seven minutes at 10:45 a.m. So feel free to wander around, and I'll come back and let you know when we're ready to reconvene. Okay, we're back in session. If you could grab your seats, folks. Council Bill 24-0544, zoning Hartford Road Overlay District for the purpose of establishing the Hartford Road Overlay District, delineating the boundaries of the district, creating applicable use regulations within the district, establishing bulk and yard regulations within the district, detailing other applicable standards within the district, amending certain off-street parking requirements, and generally relating to the establishment of the Hartford Road Overlay District. Before we go to our agencies, the lead sponsor of this legislation, Councilman Dorsey, I'm going to turn it over to him for brief remarks. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Hartford Road Overlay District is a long time coming. A year ago, as we were nearing the expiration of the Lauraville Urban Renewal Plan, I put forth a bill to extend that by a year in order to give myself time to draft this, I would say, unique and creative solution that in part addresses some of what the urban renewal plan in Lauraville does today, but in large part extends much of that intent to the entire corridor of Hartford Road, around three miles long from Argon Drive up to the county line. I think it's really important for there to actually be a unified way, a set of standards and a unified vision for the corridor, and so, and for us to address problems that have persisted for a very long time. Upon studying the corridor, and I think upon even anecdotal kind of assessment, I think anybody can say that it's been faltering along its entirety for really decades, and people have been asking for decades, "What do we need to do to make this corridor thrive?" And I think it's also the case that the answers to that question address, thank you, address a number of other challenges that the corridor faces, namely that it does not really provide the volume of housing that there is demand for. We are not nearly as diverse along the corridor as we could be and would have demand for, and that this has everything to do with kind of the uniformity, more or less, of the housing stock, that if we were to allow for smaller dwelling units, not only would we allow for more people to be able to live in the great neighborhoods that exist along the Hartford Road corridor, but that by allowing for more people to have the opportunity to live in these great neighborhoods, we would also be providing the kind of population volume that is necessary in order to be able to support a commercial corridor's growth in the way that we have been incapable of doing for the, again, many decades that we have been asking what is necessary in order to revitalize and support the corridor. I think it's notable that this was extensively studied even by the city about 16 years ago, and an extensive report was written on it, and addressing this deficiency of kind of population volume was expressly noted as absolutely necessary to revitalizing the corridor. But of course, as you've seen the letters of opposition that have come into this bill, that is often met with adamant opposition, I believe is the exact phrase of what's in that 2006 report, rather, 2008 report, that any discussion of population density change is often met with adamant opposition. It is also the case, though, that there is plenty of support for this. I waited until after the most recent primary election to put forth this bill, because I wanted to be sure that I had gone out and spoken to hundreds and thousands of people about what I intended to do as I continued to serve. And I discussed this with countless, countless people, who asked me, again, this question, "What do we need to do to support the commercial corridor? And how are we going to address housing affordability in the city? How are we going to find more housing opportunity for people in the city?" And so I put forth this bill to address all of these problems in direct alignment with the commitments that I made, and the things that I've principally spoken about, and it is my hope that we can get this passed and taking effect, and see what kind of benefits it might open us up to over the next, you know, four years or so. I don't think that it's going to bring any sort of enormous change, but I do think that the gradual kind of change that it will allow is, you know, what you would, similar to what you would see across the city in general, right? We don't see cranes up on every street of every, you know, every block of every street in the city all at once. A project happens here, and a project happens there, and little by little, things change. And I think that that's what we can expect to happen along the Hartford Road corridor, if we allow it. And the main thing that this bill allows is simply some multifamily housing in areas where it's otherwise prohibited, and I don't think that there's any inherent harm to multifamily housing, as some people might want us to believe. And there's a lot of benefit and a lot of need for it, and so I hope that we can move forward with this bill. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Baltimore Development Corporation, favorable?
Yes, favorable.
DHCD favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair, favorable.
BMZA defers to Planning Commission?
Yes.
Department of Transportation?
We have no objection.
No objection. Thank you. Planning Commission favorable with amendments, Mr. Tezo?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Walk us through the amendments, please.
Okay, and by way of introduction, I am pinching today for my colleague Carmen Morrison, who's our community planner for Northeast. Unfortunately, she is out of town today, so I'm not the subject matter expert on this one.
But explain to everyone what your position is at Department of Planning?
Oh, it's an amendment.
No, no, what is your job title?
Oh, I'm the Division Chief for Land Use and Urban Design, and I'm the Director for Project Support and Development.
So that person answers up to you?
She's in a different division, but we work together.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Tezo.
So we have several technical amendments here, and just running through the top page of our staff report, there is an amendment that addresses where driveways and curb cuts that are new for vehicles are prohibited. We're suggesting to limit that to on Hartford Road. There are several changes to uses being either permitted or conditional in various states in the use table that is a part of that bill, and that is something that is easier to show graphically than it is to try and explain line by line, which would take a tremendous amount of time. There are some edits proposed to bulk and yard regulations for multifamily dwellings to try and clarify how the rules will be applied. There were several options there, that multifamily dwellings could be developed regardless of their underlying zoning to either R9 or R10 standards, which leaves it ambiguous and hard for us on the administrative end to try and figure that out when it's left open. So we're recommending consolidating on the R10 standards. And there are some other amendments to use tables. So that is a quick summary of the amendments that the Planning Commission adopted.
Thank you. And have you or your, or Councilman, have you had an opportunity to discuss these with Mr. Tezo or our planning staff?
I attended the Planning Commission hearing, and so was made aware of these at that. I would also say that there was debate about these amendments briefly, but it was a very, very long day by the time that the members were voting on this, and I think had it not been so late, members would have probably not voted in favor of all of these amendments, so there would have been more debate about it. And I don't support all of these amendments, I do support the table changes. I have my own amendments that align with part of this, and I'm happy to explain why I don't think we should adopt certain of the Planning Commission's amendments.
Got it. Thank you. Very helpful. So there's some daylight there on a couple of them, on others, there's none. Okay. All right, very good. Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency with amendments and findings of facts?
Correct.
Okay. Tell me about, so, so let's start, we'll bifurcate that, that's a legal term, which you know. Approved for form and legal sufficiency, yes?
Yes.
Is that contingent upon amendments?
Yes.
Okay. Talk through the amendments, please.
The amendments, my understanding is that planning is recommending that curb cuts only be prohibited on Hartford Road, not in the entire Overlay District. However, I can conceive of a property who, there are only access to a parking lot or delivery or whatever, may be from Hartford Road, and if they can't have a curb cut to access their property, there could be a taking issue theoretically. So I would remove all the prohibitions on curb cuts in the Overlay District.
And is that law's only proposed amendment?
No.
All right, let's pause there for one second. So Councilman, is there an opportunity to resolve that with law?
This is the first I'm hearing that law is suggesting that there should be any change to the language relating to curb cuts. The only...
When did laws?
And, and, and just...
Hang on, hang on one second. When did, when did laws submit their agency comments report?
August 30th.
Just the nature of the bill, I don't think that there's any possibility of the, like, the taking that is being suggested, because the bill does nothing to prohibit the continued use of existing curb cuts, but it does prohibit certain land uses and certain land property design characteristics. So for example, it prohibits the, it prohibits a parking lot in front of a building. It prohibits a standalone parking lot as a principal use of a property. It prohibits new gas stations and certain other things that might have driveways. It prohibits them as new uses, but any of those uses that exist today can go into effect, and there's no, there's nothing about this bill that would give the city the authority to take away the right to use those driveways. There's nothing in here that gives the city the authority to get rid of those existing curb cuts. I don't think that there's a realistic, practical circumstance, I don't think there's a real-world possibility of whatever Ms. Toth's concerns are. I don't think they're real. I don't think they're real.
Okay.
Just because a property can't have a parking lot in the front, they might need a parking lot in the back. If they have no other access to that parking lot other than a curb cut from Hartford Road, how do you access that parking lot?
Again, there's, if there is already a curb cut there and there's already some parking lot in the back that's being accessed from the front, there's nothing to say that they can't do that, but buyer beware, right? Due diligence, the property owner, if they intend to build a parking lot in the rear of a property, then they need to do their due diligence to ensure that that property has rear access if the parking lot is going to be in the rear of the building. There is no guarantee, there is no right, there is no inherent right to be able to access the rear of a property from the street in front of it. That is not an inherent right.
Come talk to you after, when we get through.
There's no inherent right to be able to drive across a sidewalk.
There is a right to access property. And my thought was not for existing properties with curb cuts, it's for any future development of a lot that may need access and can only gain access from Hartford Road.
It is well within the rights of the City of Baltimore to regulate land use to this degree.
This is my recommendation.
It's saying, it sounds to me like a policy recommendation, not a legal recommendation.
It is most certainly not a policy recommendation.
The City of Baltimore reserves the legal right to do exactly what this bill does, I believe.
What would, well, the, I assume the Councilman's correct that the City of Baltimore has the authority to regulate land use as granted by the state of Maryland. What is, what is this conflict? What is this, what, what other rules or laws does this conflict with?
This is simply an access to property.
Yeah, yeah. Pause, please. What, what's the access to property? Where is that? Is that in Maryland law? Explain that, please.
I would, I don't have the zoning code before me or the state zoning code.
Okay. So you need to get back to us?
Yes.
Okay. That's all right.
Correct.
It would be helpful when we discuss this next to have a comprehensive understanding of, because I think we're all in agreement that the city has authority as granted by the state of Maryland to regulate land use. However, you are suggesting that something in the Councilman's bill conflicts with something else. I'm very curious as to what the something else is around a property owner's right to access their property. Okay. So we can move on from this point. Let's go to your Second Amendment, please.
The Second Amendment deals with, in the bill currently, or in the first reader of the bill, religious institutions are conditional use in all zoning districts. And cultural facilities and entertainment facility, I believe, or recreational facilities are permitted uses. And under the federal law, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, you can't place a greater burden on a religious facility than on a cultural or other facility. So Planning has drafted an amendment addressing this, and Law Department is fine with Planning's suggested amendment.
All right. Mr. Tezo, is that correct?
I believe that is correct. We have the fourth sub-bullet that's changing place of worship in OR1 from conditional by board permitted. I believe that is what we need.
Okay.
This is incorporated into my amendment.
So we're in agreement on this one?
Yes.
All right. Let's move to the next one. Just two.
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So we've gotten through agency comments on the bill, correct? Okay. Colleagues, we're going to start with Vice President Middleton. Questions for our agencies.
Just one question. The conversation I was, the conversation I was listening to about access to property, has the fire department weighed in or is, can someone explain why the, you know, it sounds like the fire department needs to look at the report to weigh in on access of property for safety? Has that happened in this report anywhere?
We, we can have the fire department follow up in time for the next hearing and ensure that that information is provided at that hearing.
Because I think their information would be important in this, in that conversation as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Dorsey.
I don't have any...
These are questions for our city agencies.
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions.
You're good. Okay. Great. Okay. We're now going to go into public testimony. So I'm going to call your name. I'm going to ask you, come up to the lectern. There's two buttons on that device. You're going to need to press the button on the right. When you see this ring light up red, you're good to go. When you come up, if you could please state your name for the record, and if you're affiliated with any organization that you're advocating on behalf of, or if you're just a neighbor or business owner, just explain to me very briefly who you are, and you'll have two minutes to testify on this matter. So I'm going to start in the order that you all signed in. Ms. Susan Castle. Yep, Ms. Castle, if you could come on up.
Oh, it's now red, sorry. Is that close enough? And I do want to say that I'm really awkward with giving public testimony, so forgive me. My name is Susan Castle. I'm going to represent the CRP, which is the Citizens Review Panel for the Lauraville URP, and also just as a resident of Waltherston and a private citizen. In terms of the CRP, we understand that there's been a request from Councilman Dorsey for an expedited process or a schedule for this. One of it, and the main reason is based on the fact that the URP is expiring, and it is, but unfortunately, there's very little in this that, that continues our use restrictions that are in the 2022 revision that we've given. And there are no sign or design restrictions that are in the proposal, the bill. We also tried to find testimony from DHCD, but we, when I went down to zoning, zoning seemed unaware of this, and this seems really kind of problematic because we, right now, currently, we do interface a lot with zoning. We really didn't have any meetings prior to July with Councilman Dorsey about this or no discussion specific to this bill that relate at all to us. We've only had his reassurances that the restrictions, the use restrictions and sign and sign requirements would be kept in as much as possible. This was as late as our July 8 meeting, I think. We also feel that, well, I don't know if this is really CRP, I'm going to merge into probably my personal, but Hartford Road has already allowed multifamily, the entire corridor from the beginning to the end of this proposal. It already allows multifamily, and that just hasn't been taken advantage of in the entire time I've been on the CRP, which has been about 10 years, I think. We've only had a few developers and they've, I'm in the Lauraville area, Waltherston, and that's where the development has taken place. We've only had two single-family homes changed into multifamily, and they've been in the last year or so. Just in terms of the community, I don't personally feel like the engagement has been commensurate to the amount of properties that are involved. There have been, there was one association meeting, I'm sorry, there was one community meeting, and it was attended by about 50 people, which is very nice, but it doesn't represent the quantity of houses involved, at least not to me. And we had no awareness of the process of this or the timeline or anything. We did not realize how quickly this could happen. And we really have had no real awareness or of, of an overall community that, as, as the bill was crafted, and we don't feel like we had any chance for input. I know Councilman Dorsey has talked to a lot of people, but I honestly haven't talked to anybody who really was aware of it or, or the, wrap it up, is that what you're saying? Sorry, but I'm trying to do two things, two neighborhoods. And we don't really have any, we've had no comparison to other neighborhoods like ours. It's all been urban neighborhoods. All comparisons have been for an urban block face. So I think that we all appreciate the, the long range plan for the entire three miles, but there's no other section of the city that's this long that is a cohesive neighborhood. So we really feel like we've already got a thriving community in my area, which is Hamilton-Lauraville Main Street. And we just feel like there are much more direct ways that this could be, that the businesses could be helped with incentives and many other things. We really support our business community, and our business community of Lauraville is not in support of this. So Beverly Hills is also here, and they asked me to read something, but if you would rather I don't, we can refer...
Are, are you going to come up and testify?
She doesn't want to.
All right. Go ahead, go ahead, if you can read.
You want, may I just read it then? The Beverly Hills Improvement Association supports and encourages commercial development in Baltimore's many diverse neighborhoods. However, it must be done in a manner that is best for any new venture and also shows respect to those community residents who might be adversely affected by any zoning outcomes resulting from the generalized overlay. Such large swaths of property cannot be allowed to be affected in this way that is proposed in this council bill. And that was submitted to you all, I think, over the weekend. And my apologies for a bombardment.
You're, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard Ochs, come on up, Mr. Richard. You're good. You're on. Pull, pull that up a little bit closer to your...
My name is Richard Ochs, O-C-H-S. I live in Lauraville, a half a block off Hartford Road, near Lake Monobello, and I represent residents in my neighborhood, 20 of which signed a petition against the zoning change on Hartford Road from Lauraville all the way to the county line. First of all, we are upset about the lack of transparency and adequate public notice of these zoning changes and request that another hearing be scheduled by the City Council with adequate notice, public notice of how the residents affected can give comment either online or in a public hearing. So we request an adequately notified public hearing in addition to this one. Our main complaint is the commercialization of residential neighborhoods. We understand that businesses along Hartford Road are problematic, some of them out of business, some of them just a tax write-off, operating at a loss with deteriorating properties. We're sympathetic to revitalization of that corridor, but not at the expense of expanding it into residential neighborhoods and making them commercialized for any business that they want to do in this zoning change. There are other ways to revitalize the deteriorating commercial businesses on Hartford Road, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, which is a federal program to subsidize tax losses by the city from businesses that are not performing and are operating at a loss, which is a tax loss to the city. So there are federal programs to compensate for those inadequate businesses. Nevertheless, to expand the commercialization into residential neighborhoods is not the answer for the problems along Hartford Road. There are other adequate plans for that. We oppose the commercialization and into residential neighborhoods. I live in a diversified neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way and...
I'm going to ask you to wrap up, sir.
Okay. So there are many problems, which I don't have time to go into now, but I hope the City Council will have an adequately notified public hearing in the future and delay the decision on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to, we're not going to engage in, in dialogue with members of the public that are testifying, but I do want to make a note of clarification that this hearing was announced at a Monday council meeting and then was near immediately posted on the City Council website after. So that, that is in fact appropriate notification. Now, if you haven't heard from a, a council member directly, that's a different story, but I, I do want to make sure that everyone is clear for the record that the process is, once a bill is introduced, the council president refers it to a committee. And then the chair of the committee at that hearing or at a subsequent hearing will announce a hearing date. The chair of the committee, I announced the hearing date at a Monday council meeting. And then the, the folks that support the council president's office, they post that online on the website. So I just want to be clear, that is the standard process, and that process was, was followed for this.
Aren't the zoning changes requiring of signs in the neighborhood?
Mr. Leva, is there a, a sign postage requirement for this bill?
For zoning, there was a sign posting and newspaper ad.
So there was...
Mr. Chair. Ms. Tezo? We, we met the signposting and newspaper advertisement requirement for this bill.
Sure. So I, I don't, I don't want to negate your, your testimony. Your testimony was very helpful, sir. I just, I just want to make sure that everyone is clear that we did follow, did in fact follow the legal requirements for notification.
Didn't see signs, but thank you.
Yes, sir. I want to thank you for, for coming out today and providing testimony.
Can I just say one more?
Nope. No, you can't. Whoever said that. Thank you. Ms. Mary Boudal? Did I say that right? Ms. Mary Bu- Boudal?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's, that's you? Okay. Do you want to testify? We can bring the lectern back to you if you'd like, or you don't have to.
No, I can just say a couple words.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for coming. Oh, I'd just like to say that I understand that Mr. Dorsey has his insights into what should happen in the future. And of course, Hartford Road does need some improvement, but I would not call it dysfunctional compared to Bel Air Road and some other thoroughfares. Hartford Road is, is a rather good location with the businesses and whatever. But my own issue is the overlay bill extending 500 feet on either side of Hartford Road into the residential communities. the residential communities. I don't think this is really necessary. There are plenty areas that are, that could be developed on Harford Road for apartments. Not a whole lot of land, but I'm sure there could be something. But I just think disrupting the entire residential district for 500 feet on each side, allowing for developers to take advantage of this situation and perhaps tear down an individual home, build a four, whatever the limitation is for a large apartment building, I just think it would be very disruptive to the current residents. And I know people aspire to become homeowners and all of a sudden that issue is, seems to be annulled. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am. Frida Fanning?
No, I'm sorry. My name is.
Got it. Thank you. Michael, Michael, last name with a K?
Yeah, that's, I accidentally filled that out.
Wrong form. Okay. Very good. Any other members of the public who wish to testify on the Harford Road matter? You do. Come on up. Need your name and your, if applicable, organization, please. Thank you.
I'm Rocky Dunn.
Move that, get that a little closer. There you go. Thank you.
I'm Rocky Dunn and I'm a member of the Beverly Hills Association. Prior to that, I was with Waltherston. Prior to that, Frankfurt Improvement, Harbell. So there's a lot of residency in myself. Our gardens, our trees, we hear from people who are looking at Arcadia, Beverly Hills, where Ryan lives, Mayfield, nice homes, they're looking for residences. And these are people who live there. He just mentioned the measuring of 500 feet. That's two and a half football fields into residential areas. I can assure you, for the 20-some years I've lived in Beverly Hills, they came to Beverly Hills because of residential appeal, not anything else. We have commercial versus residential going on here. We hope that the various committees think about that, that regular, everyday people who are tax-paying people and lived in the area a long time are interested in this being appropriate for our residential neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony. Okay. Any other members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Okay. We are now going to go into recess on this matter now. I want to quickly walk through the council rules so that everyone is aware of what the rules are for calling the next hearing on this matter. So all of the signage requirements have been met. Mr. Tizo, Mr. Leva, is there any law department? Is there any debate about that? So we've met the posting requirements. So once a land use related hearing occurs, once the first hearing occurs, there is no subsequent signposting requirements. Let me repeat that again. There is no subsequent signposting requirements. So when a subsequent hearing on this matter is called, it will be merely posted on the city council website on the legislative calendar. Now, sometimes for a second hearing, we will announce it at the Monday council meeting. So, but we are not required to do so. So I just want to be clear with everyone, for those of you that are, that have taken time out of your busy schedules to come in and testify and share your position on this matter, that moving forward, you should follow the city council's website and you're certainly welcome to reach out to any member, specifically your member of the council, to inquire as to when subsequent action may or may not be taken on this matter. Are there any questions on that? Okay, everyone on Harford Road, we're good, we understand the, okay, excellent. I want to thank you all for coming out. We are now in recess on that matter, okay? We're now going to take a three-minute recess and we're going to come back at 11:40 a.m. and start to, start the Amtrak-related hearings. Okay? Okay, folks, we're going to get started. Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, Eric Costello, councilman for the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. To my left, Councilman Isaac Yitzchak Schleifer, 5th District, member of the committee. Councilman James Torrance, 7th District. Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Member of the Committee. Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee. To my immediate right and I, Garrett, Staff to the Committee, who's actually in charge. So here's what we're going to do for the Amtrak bills. So we have six bills in front of us today. So we are going to call all six of the hearings to order. We are then going to go through agency comments and Amtrak comments on all six of the bills individually. Bill one, all the agencies. Bill two, all the agencies, so on and so forth. Okay? Then we are going to take public testimony. Public testimony does not need to be related to any specific bill. Some people signed up for one bill, some people signed up for the other. My, my gut is that you all are here to talk about the larger issue and maybe not a specific piece of legislation, but maybe you want to talk about a specific one. You'll be free to use your time as you see fit to discuss this. What we're not going to do is, council members are not going to engage with you while you are testifying, other than me reminding you when your time is about to be up, when your time is up, me politely reminding you, and then progressively those reminders will get less polite, but I've politely explained that to you at the onset. I may interrupt you to ask a point of clarification. Ma'am, did you say 16 or 61? I didn't hear you. So you may get questions for clarification like that just from the chair. Then at the end, Councilman Torrance is going to provide some comments, once he's had an opportunity to listen to testimony from the public. And then we're going to recess. We are not going to vote on these bills today. So before we get started, is there any questions from anyone who's here on the Amtrak matter as to the process or flow of the hearing? I don't, I don't want to hear your position right now. I just want to know if you have any questions about how we're going to conduct today's proceedings. Is there anyone with any, we got a lot of questions. Okay. We are going to, we are going to go into recess once we've heard public testimony. We're not going to make a decision today because we're not going to vote on it. I can't commit to you what potential decisions we would make in the future, but I'm letting you know from the onset that we are not voting any of these bills out today. Okay? You had a question, sir? Cover. You have a question, ma'am?
I'm wondering whether people that are here are going to see your time.
We're not going to do that. Yep. If someone has a mobility or a speech or, or other, anything health-related impairment, come see me and we'll, we'll do our very best to make accommodations for you, but we're not going to do like, these three neighbors want to see their two minutes of time, so you get eight minutes type, yeah. Okay. Ma'am?
I also want to bring in to your question that there are council members who need online.
We don't take online testimony in this community, in this committee. No, we don't. We haven't, I see you shaking your head, but we haven't taken online testimony in this committee in two and a half years and we're not going to start today. Members of the public are welcome to watch Charm TV. They are welcome to log into the WebEx to watch the proceeding. Those members of the public are welcome to submit written testimony. Some of you have been copied on emails from me or Natwana Austin or Nia Garrett or Councilman Torrance, saying, please add this testimony to the bill file. So, one second. So that it's, it's in the record, but we do not do virtual testimony anymore. We stopped doing that, you know, once COVID got under control. Hold, hold on.
There's still online.
There's still online.
About the case of, of the testimony that's been presented, there's a question there that there's going to be still available.
I, I appreciate you pointing that out. We're not, we're not, that's, okay. So just kind of the structure of the city council and how all this works. So we had COVID, we had a pandemic, we needed to transition to virtual so that we could continue to conduct business. All hearings were virtual for, I don't know, a year, year and a half. Then we went back to in-person. Each committee chair, as I explained previously, kind of does, can run their committee at their discretion. We stopped taking virtual testimony in this committee back in like, I don't know, mid-2022. I regret that that is posted on the city council website. That is incorrect. We have members of the council president's office here, they manage the city council website. So the individual members and the chairs of the committees don't manage that website. So we will, and I see Mr. Lacamey in the back, who is one of the council president's senior directors, and I see him shaking his head up and down, indicating that we will get that language corrected on the website immediately. The good news, for the sake of public participation, is that we are not making any decisions today. So folks will be informed, same process that I explained for Harford Road, right? Folks will be informed by going to the council website or reaching out to Councilman Torrance as to when the next hearing is, and will have an opportunity to make reasonable accommodations. And I will be happy to entertain additional public testimony from individuals who do not testify today. So if you testified today, we are not going to take public testimony from you at the subsequent hearing. Okay? Is everyone good on that? Okay. Councilman, you wanted to add something or no?
I was going to ask if that could be.
Is, do you want to add something or no? So that's a yes or a no to start?
Yes.
Please.
I just want to say I recognize the chair's discretion and I was going to propose the actual, I was going to propose the actual middle ground that you have mentioned that they can testify at the next public hearing. I also want to make sure that for residents online, I am willing to, if not have, if you are willing to, you can record your testimony, we share it with the committee as well via email. If you are online now and you're willing to give it today, that would be another option that you can do, and then that will be publicly available as well on the website. I just want to offer that as another solution as well. Chair.
So the councilman recommended some, some suggestions and I appreciate the councilman trying to find a solution here. So if you are online, so let me kind of summarize what the chair's decision here is. If you are online, you're not going to be able to testify virtually today. However, you may provide written testimony, you may provide audio or video testimony via email, and you will have the right to attend the next hearing if and when on this matter and provide verbal testimony in chambers at that time. So no one will have their voice disenfranchised today. Everyone will kind of follow the same set of rules. And again, there's going to be testimony today and there will be testimony whenever subsequent hearings on this matter are scheduled and it will be structured the same way. Is everyone good? Okay, ma'am?
The slide sheet was here right after, so if you're going to have a question, make sure I'll make it.
You will absolutely have a chance to testify whether your name is on any one of those six sheets or not. And if for some reason we get to the end and you haven't, raise your hand, get my attention and I promise you, you will have an opportunity to testify. Any other questions? Everyone's in agreement with how we're going to run the hearing today. So I'm taking everyone's silence as confirmation that you're in agreement with how we're going to run the hearings today. Okay, outstanding. Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call all six hearings to order and then I'm going to start by bill number and go through our agency comments reports. Who's here for Amtrak? Two people? Three people? You all work? Who works for Amtrak? Okay. Who's testifying for Amtrak?
Leah and Ms. Phillips.
Good to see you back here in a different capacity. If you two ladies could please grab these chairs up here? Okay. And then everyone else here who's a city agency has an agency comment report for one of these bills, correct? Is there anyone that doesn't? Because if you don't, you can go home or go back to work. You do whatever you want. You, you just don't have to stay here. Okay. So I'm going to assume that everyone is, okay. Very good. Okay. I'm going to read the six bills in. Number one, Council Bill 24-0562, city streets opening subterranean portions of Ducatelle Street, Brookfield Avenue and certain streets and alleys. Number two, Council Bill 24-0563, city streets closing subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bounded by portions of Linden Avenue, West North Avenue, Utah Place, Ducatelle Street, Brookfield Avenue, Reservoir Street, Whitlock Street, Newington Avenue, Calo Avenue, Park Avenue and Mount Royal Terrace. Number three, Council Bill 24-0564, sale of properties, subterranean portions of streets and alleys bounded by portions of Linden Avenue, West North Avenue, Utah Place, Ducatelle Street, Brookfield Avenue, Reservoir Street, Whitlock Street, Newington Avenue, Calo Avenue, Park Avenue and Mount Royal Terrace, Group Four. Number four, Council Bill 24-0565, city streets closing subterranean portions of certain streets and alleys bounded by Westwood Avenue, Northmount Street, Pressman Street and Appleton Street. Bill number five, Council Bill 24-0566, city streets opening subterranean portions of North Monroe Street, McKeon Avenue and a 10-foot alley. And finally, Bill number six, Council Bill 24-0567, sale of properties, subterranean portions of streets and alleys bounded by portions of Northmount Street, Pressman Street, Appleton Street and Westwood Avenue. So now, all six bills have been called to order. That means we can discuss any of these six bills and this is all part of the, the public record, okay? So we're going to start with Council Bill 24-0562. We're going to start with DHCD favorable.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
BDC favorable.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Public Works favorable.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Planning, no objection.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Transportation favorable.
Favorable.
Thank you. Law Department favorable with amendments and defers to DPW and DOT. I don't even know what that means.
I know what this is. Elena DePietro for the Law Department. There was some concern, I don't think it's absolutely a necessary amendment, but it's cited that this would should be, that the DPW should be the agency involved here when in fact the charter has changed and now DOT has these responsibilities. So we, I think it's not an absolute have to amend because the rest of the charter would, would automatically.
So does law withdraw their request for an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So now, seeing as the amendment request has been withdrawn, is the bill approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. So no further comments on this one, Mr. Pietro? Outstanding. Okay. And we don't have formal agency comments for Amtrak, so we're going to take a quick audible and we'll give Amtrak an opportunity to testify at the end of the six before we get into the public testimony. Okay, next. Council Bill 24-0563, DHCD favorable.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
BDC favorable.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Planning, no objection.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Transportation favorable.
Favorable.
Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency with comments?
Yes, the Law Department approves for form and legal sufficiency. And this goes probably for. And this goes probably for all the opening and closing that the appropriate notice has been given. We're assuming that.
I can't hear you.
We're assuming that all the appropriate notices under the law have been provided.
Okay, that's the comment.
That's the comment, yes.
Okay, no amendments, correct?
No, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Okay, next up, Council Bill 24-0564, Real Estate favorable.
Yes, favorable.
Planning, no objection.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Office of Equity and Civil Rights, none as of this.
Uh, if I may make a comment, we did submit a report, Mr. Chair.
Who are you?
Good morning, Check Ourself Vice Chair, Slime for Members of the Ways and Committee. My name is Zachary Wellman, Equity Policy Analyst for the Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Okay.
The OECR submitted, not make, not to make it in time, a report in which we made no recommendation on City Council Bill 24-0564 due to an ongoing Title VI Civil Rights Complaint lodged by the Reservoir Hill Association against the US Department of Transportation regarding the Frederick Douglass Tunnel Project. The OECR believes that it's prudent that the Title VI complaint and any potential legal action therein must first be concluded before selling the identified property. Thank you.
So, I, I don't understand what that, what does that mean? No objection?
No, me, no recommendation because currently we cannot decide whether we are, we cannot make the assumption of favorable.
You're not taking a position.
Correct.
Got it, thank you. Okay. All right, so we did real estate, we did planning, we did equity. Okay, finance, not opposed?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Transportation?
Favorable.
Thank you. Public Works favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, next one. Council Bill 24-0565, Transportation favorable?
Favorable.
Planning, no objection?
No objection.
BDC favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
DHCD favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Public Works favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency with comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, we approve for form and legal sufficiency.
And the comments?
Uh, hold on one moment, please. I'm taking this from my colleagues, so.
Sound like a microwave alarm.
I, I know, this, this was just the, the same notice comment.
Got it.
So we approve the bill.
All right, very good. Next one, Council Bill 24-0566, Transportation favorable?
Favorable.
Public Works favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Planning, no objection?
No objection.
BDC favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
DHCD favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Law, um, approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And you withdraw the request for amendment related to the DPW DOT?
The same as the last one, yes.
Just want to quadruple check.
Sure.
All right, very good. Last, Council Bill 24-0567, Real Estate favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Planning, no objection?
No objection.
Office of Equity and Civil Rights defers to DOT?
That is correct.
So you're deferring to DOT on one bill and you're taking no position on the other?
This bill pertains to a, I apologize, this bill pertains to a separate portion of property being sold in a separate location outside of the Reservoir Hill community.
Very, very good.
That has lodged the civil rights complaint regarding the other bill.
Okay, Transportation?
Favorable.
So your position's favorable. Public Works favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Finance, not opposed?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Law Department?
Law Department approves the bill for formally a sufficiency. We did comment again about the timing, uh, the notice requirements.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, all agency comments have been submitted, received, et cetera. Amtrak, anything you would like to add today on the plethora of bills that have extended our morning? Make sure you turn on the mic.
Sorry, I don't know how to do this.
All right.
We have a presentation with a few slides to share to explain a little bit about what's going on with these, with these bills specifically.
Great, and are we all connected? We did not know. Did you inform anyone that you had? Did you inform anyone from Council Services?
No, I just received the slide deck this morning and so I apologize.
Okay, so what do we, what do we got to do to get the slides up there?
Yeah, um, are you able to join the webinar?
I'm already in it.
Oh, and what's her name?
Odessa Philip.
And real, real quick, we have an electronic version of this. Has that been shared with the, or Nina, if you could send it so we can add it to the bill files?
Yes.
And, and just as a, a note for Naya and the mayor's office, the council president's office, any piece of testimony or document, anything related to this should be added to all six bill files. So if that could please be communicated with Ms. Natwana Austin, who's the executive secretary of the council. Please and thank you. How much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation?
Maybe five minutes.
Take it away.
Yeah, it's, it's very, very quick. Um, my name's Leah Gatlin, I'm Amtrak's Director of Real Estate. I'm with the Frederick Douglass Tunnel Program and heading up all of the acquisitions and real estate management to promote the program and to affect the program. We are here today to support the six bills for the opening, closings, and eventual sales of subterranean rights within public roadways within two groups. Can we jump to the next? Here we go. We're going to give you a few introductions and then a brief program overview and then talk about the subterranean property under the streets and alleys. Again, I am here today, my name's Leah Gatlin, I have with me Odessa Philip, who is Head of Outreach. We also have Jane Brophy with Government Affairs and Deborah Rockind with the Amtrak Law Department. We also have Mr. Ben Groff, who's been working with us on Government Affairs as well. I'm a little touchy with this. There we go. You want to walk through the program overview? There you go.
Really quickly, Mr. Chair, Odessa Philip, uh, leading public engagement and outreach for Amtrak. Uh, just a quick overview of the program. The existing Baltimore-Potomac Tunnel connects West Baltimore Mark Station with Baltimore Penn Station in West Baltimore. It is now being referred to as the Frederick Douglass Tunnel Program with the approval of the Frederick Douglass family. And the new program puts the alignment for Amtrak's Northeast Corridor on new alignment, illustrated here in the green solid and dashed line. The black line with the orange dashes illustrates the existing Baltimore and Potomac Tunnel on the existing Amtrak Northeast Corridor. The Frederick Douglass Tunnel Program will modernize this key section of the Northeast Corridor and address the largest bottleneck between DC and New York. Uh, it will also increase capacity in several different ways as listed here on this slide. Also, part of the program includes the construction of a new ADA accessible West Baltimore Mark Station, five bridge replacements, three of which are railroad bridges, two are roadway bridges here in the city, as well as additionally creating 11 Baltimore City roadway modifications. Uh, the final larger element of the program is the construction of noise barriers in Midtown Edmondson and the Greater Rosemont Communities. And with that, these will allow for, Leah will talk about the amendments here.
Just, this is just a brief explanation of subterranean real estate rights with a graphic to show what the subterranean pertains to. It is below the ground. You have a bundle of sticks with real estate and the subterranean rights are one of those sticks. With these bills, the, the sale that would go through is basically part of one stick being the subterranean. It's if you think about air rights and you just turn it upside down to go underground. We've been working with this, with, with the DOT and we gathered up all of the roads and alleys, split them into four groups so that they were more manageable to work with. And we have developed these ordinances that are ready to go for Groups One and Four, if you can see. There's also Groups Two and Three, but those are not here today. Group One is in Sandtown Winchester and Easterwood. Group Four is in Reservoir Hill. These are the six ordinances that have already been, that were introduced. And this is a, like, a, a closer up of the Group One streets between Pressman Street up to Westwood Avenue. The subterranean property acquisitions in this area start at depths between 20 and 100 feet from the surface. At that, the tunnel therein is also 50, excuse me, 60 to 100 feet from the surface in this area as well. This is well below any utility, any other infrastructure that would be underground. Group Four, which is from Jordan Street to Mount Royal Terrace, the subterranean rights and acquisitions will be between at levels of 85 and 115 feet below the surface. And then the tunnel is at least 70 to 150 feet below the surface. And that's kind of it. Just very, very direct. It's, but we're willing to talk about it a little bit more if there are specific questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, any questions for city agencies? Councilman Torrance, I'm sure you have many, so I'm going to come to you last. VP Middleton? Dorsey Burnett? Questions, question? You have questions for Amtrak? Take it away.
Or could be for anyone else. So the questions I had, um, obviously when you're talking about a train going under, underground under people's property, um, there's concerns, uh, and this has been raised even with the Redline Project years ago around vibration, um, and any sort of impact on the, the home, the structure of the homes themselves. Can you speak to, or yourself, or any other, uh, agency representatives here to testing that's been done, uh, in, in those areas? Uh, in particular, uh, to start around vibration and noise, uh, underneath of residential properties?
Testing for vibration and noise?
Correct. As, it's my understanding that these are federal, they're the federal guidelines that are required by Amtrak.
There have been vibration and noise studies done for the, for how it exists today. In, in the, the installation method, the construction method is not expected to cause any damage to any property within these areas, within any residential area. The construction technology is a TBM. It, with, with that technology on top of the depth of the tunnel and how it's been designed, there is no expectation of damage to property.
And what's TBM? I'm sorry, I don't.
I'm sorry. It's a tunnel, it's called a tunnel boring machine.
Okay, so you're saying that Amtrak has already met the federal guidelines for this project?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman. Just to answer the question, the environmental documents that were produced and completed in 2017 have associated with them, um, all of the environmental reports, and those reports are all available, um, on our website, fdtunnel.com. The area of expertise for, uh, real estate does not include, uh, the result, the answers to your question, so I wanted to make sure I identified where you could find that information.
Can I ask a follow-up, Mr. Chair? Okay, so you said from 2017, we're seven years later. Obviously, there's new construction that's occurred, uh, in this footprint since then. Is there a required, uh, review of what was submitted seven years ago for this project?
So in response to review of that, uh, document, uh, the environmental document as it has been completed has been accepted for us to be able to move forward. The requirement for additional study is where there are changes to the, um, existing document. And for that, Amtrak completes, uh, under the guidance of the Federal Railroad Administration, reevaluations where there are changes, uh, from what has been previously proposed. Uh, those reevaluation documents are also available on the fdtunnel.com website where completed. So if they are not complete, if they're under, if they're still on, ongoing, they're not posted there yet.
Okay. That's all I have for this round, Mr. Chair.
Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In relationship to Jordan Street, I know that this has been an issue that has gone back and forth with community members about, at one time you guys wanted, you wanted to actually provide full access from Utah Place to Linden Avenue with Jordan Street. Is that still the plan that you intend to have?
It is not a plan that we have currently and that is not included in this legislation that we have. The legislation we have today is, is subterranean only. We will be approaching council, um, in the near future regarding Jordan Street.
Thank you, that, that is helpful as I communicated, communicated to community members that you would have to come back for the purchasing of that portion of Jordan Street. But I just want to make sure for the public record, they know that the plan was not to move forward with creating that access so that it is recorded in public as well.
Correct.
In relationship to the, I know that because of the current complaint and litigation, I'm limited in the questions that I can ask you currently in public. So with that being said, I do have questions about.
Hold on. What questions and why can't you ask those questions?
They currently have a complaint against them with the Department of Transportation. I believe there are three civil complaints currently.
City, city, state, or US Department?
Federal, federal.
US Department, sure.
And there's other claims that have been made against them, so I have to be very choice in my word.
You can, you can ask whatever you want, they, they would decline to offer it.
Yes, um.
Okay, so feel free to ask away.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm not violating council rules with litigation.
No, I mean, if they can't answer, the Law Department says don't answer, then.
I just wanted to make sure, um, didn't violate the council rules, just being clear. So in relationship to this, um, I know that my colleague who's taken the question about the, the vibration test, in terms of access, when will you be required to do those actual tests, um, for the new construction? I know my colleague asked, I know that there's a difference between the planning phase and actual construction phase. When will you be required to do those tests and if you have an answer currently today?
Do you have the answer to that?
So, um, I'm try, I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear on the question. When will we be required to do which tests? I'm not sure.
So, uh, I'll make it very clear. So I know that you have the 2017 plan, which is based off of the environmental study then. The question is, as we move into construction, which you eventually will have for the program, when will you, when you enter construction, have to do those tests? And by what timeline would you have to, um, just to meet your obligations?
I, I can't answer when we'd be required to do those tests?
So, uh, I can, I'm just going to make that as, as I will mention at the end of the hearing, that that is a committee request from me, like, can we have some type of timeline for when you enter construction, when those tests will be required so that the community as well as the public is clear that there's the testing that you did in terms of pre-construction and there's the actual construction testing that you have to. and there's the actual construction testing that you have to take place? I think that is an actual fair question to ask.
My apologies. I think I have clarity on the question. So, as part of the program and throughout the duration of construction, the contractors are required to test throughout construction for vibration, and I think that's the question you're asking, for vibration and noise throughout the duration of construction. That is written into their contract documents. They are currently requesting from members of the community permission to, excuse me, to access their properties in order to install monitoring equipment on the facade of buildings and homes that are within the tunnel alignment, with the permission of the, of that property owner. That instrumentation will assess deflections, and that can be in the vertical horizontal direction as well as vibration. We've started that process over the last two, I think, two or three months. They've been requesting them and they have started. Without the permission of a property owner, they will install that monitoring equipment within public right of way.
Okay. And do we have a timeline for the installation of that equipment in public right of way?
Depending upon when we find out whether we have sufficient permission from property owners, we'll decide when we will request it for public right of way.
They're doing instrumentation now, and pre-construction surveys now in the Midtown Edmondson area, because that is where the, where the work will be commencing. The TBM, the tunnel boring machine, is not expected to be pushing through underneath the earth until 2026. The instrumentation is important to, we want to have that instrumentation installed for about 30 days to create a baseline, so that they have something to bounce against. And then, the 30 days before the tunnel boring machine would be going under those specific properties.
That is extremely helpful in understanding that, especially for residents in, in Midtown, especially since, if I remember correctly from your charts, they have, I think, 70 feet below their actual properties will be the actual tunnel?
In Midtown Edmondson, there's actually, it's, the work is at the surface.
Okay.
And that's where, that's why, that where the work starts, and that's why their instrumentation and the surveys are important right there.
Okay. I'm allowed to continue, Mr. Chair? I know that they're, okay, I'm going to keep going. My next question is, I know that because we are giving you subterranean rights, there's a resident who lives next door to where you will be getting these rights, which is Darryl Davis and others on Utah Place and Linden. With these rights, I just want to make sure that we have a, and this is both a comment and a question, that we have a fair conversation about the expectations of residents' property along that alignment in terms of the subterranean rights. Because my understanding, for these rights, we're giving you rights to provide access, let me be clear, for the subterranean rights, this allows you not only bore, but put the connections to the ventilation shaft under that street or those streets. Am I correct or wrong?
That is correct.
So, I just wanted to make sure I just level set, so the next follow-up for the question is, now that we know that for the access, with grant, this subterranean rights provides you access to do what you need to do to create the connections for the ventilation shaft. The question is now, the communication about the ventilation shaft, do I have a commitment from you all to continue to come back to the table about the design of that shaft, the location of that shaft, as it relates to community members in Reservoir Hill?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
I say that because my public comments that were raised in the CHAP Committee, I know that you guys have come back with several versions of what that actual facility would look like, what the use of it is. You've made some actual improvements, but I know that the community still has concerns about the technology, as well as how it's related to the sale of this property as well. So I just wanted to make sure that we're continuing to push that along in terms of making sure that it is responsive to their needs. The next question I do have, I know that we, as a city, are, are using these bills to provide you access to create this tunnel, as well as the intimate ventilation shaft. My question is, related to this, is more so, I'm trying to word this in a way that is both productive, but does not distract from the fact that there is serious concerns. And I say this as a person of color, that we generally are distrustful of government, we are generally distrustful of environmental issues. And I recognize the ability that we have in terms of addressing those concerns. I just want to make sure that their commitments, and what commitments can Amtrak make in terms of providing more details about the design of the shaft and the technology used in the shaft, and the potential health impacts it will have on residents?
We're willing to absolutely keep the conversation going. There is, the design progresses and the design evolves, and we want to hear input, valuable input, from persons that are concerned. We are willing to take suggestions, we are willing to incorporate suggestions as it fits the design. We also have to keep in mind the fit function and utility of its served, of its intended use at the same time. Where there is room to make accommodations, the doors open for input.
Thank you. With that being said, if this council were to introduce a informational or investigative hearing resolution related to the vent shaft and the design, would you be willing to come forth and provide information with your technical experts about the design of the facility?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, I'll yield on this round of questions, Mr. Chair.
Well, this is, this is going to be the only round of questions for the agencies and Amtrak, so, once, once we get past this, we're going to go to public testimony, and then we're going to give you an opportunity to close it out. So if you have remaining questions, I would ask them now.
Well, thank you. I'll keep going. The other question is, neighbors have brought up the purchasing of properties and how this bill would be invalidated if we were to sell the property to you. I don't know if that is a question for the law department or others, but this has been run up by multiple neighbors, whether it's related to 2001 Park Avenue or the purchasing of public right of way, that it would invalidate the actual program. Do you have any comments related to that?
I don't know what that means. No, I'm not familiar with this, no.
So, I'll just add that as a follow-up for us after this hearing to actually discuss those requirements, so that we can provide notice to the public of whether or not those requirements are met or not, based off of federal law as well as with the city. Outside of that, the others' comments that I have received from neighbors is related to the offer letters that they receive adjacent to this actual sale. I will tell you that the city of Baltimore, as well as the state, has, I'm not, I'm going to be transparent, we can't undo racism in terms of how we've rid line black and brown communities, or the way that we value them. I recognize that you guys made an offer to residents. This is complicated in so many ways. After hearing from residents in Sandtown Winchester and others, I recognize that some of them actually don't own the rights below their homes because of ground rent, some actually don't own the surface rights to their properties. For me, I think that I would, would like a commitment from Amtrak to discuss how we can rectify some of those needs of those communities, because what I find is that we're not going to undo racism in terms of this entire real estate market that was created in the city of Baltimore, but we have to be culturally sensitive in how we approach any type of real estate offers that we make in black and brown communities. Is there a commitment from Amtrak to have meetings and discuss how we can rectify that, both from the city side and somehow offer relief to residents?
Absolutely. We're willing to have conversations. Anyone that's received an offer, there's a negotiator and someone, a representative to contact to make a counter offer, and we can have that conversation. We are committed to working in good faith with property owners, to, to their benefit, and try to keep these matters out of federal court in condemnation proceedings. That is not something that Amtrak takes a, takes lightly. We do not have a heavy hand where this is concerned. I consider it a personal failure, as someone who's been handling railroad real estate for 25 years.
Thank you, because that is a concern of mine, because I have residents who have lanes against their property, that if you offer them anything, they probably won't receive any porcies from that actual deal. I want to make sure that people are protected, but also that my job here is to level the playing field. I'm just being transparent with you. I have not been completely pleased with this program, because of numerous issues related to, and I'm just going to be quite frank about it, in terms of public engagement and how it has not been, I think you guys have a difficult job in terms of communication. I think that there has not been a humanistic side of approaching communities in a way that is not only meaningful, I say that because I'm a black man in West Baltimore, I still have residents who don't trust me because I'm a member of the government. So I can only imagine when someone else is sending them a blanket letter that they just received for the first time, how that feels threatening to them. Or, as I've had in instances with your contractor who decided to demo a building multiple times outside of the actual posted time in which they were demoing it, next to one of our schools, I'm happy that you disciplined that contractor, but that contractor knocked down a building that had asbestos in it, next door to a $40 million elementary school. And it took us finding out from residents that that date was changed. So, I, I use this time to say that, and I'll give this to my comments later, I'm here to make sure that these residents get a level playing field when interacting with Amtrak, and I think that we need to make sure that happens. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That's all your questions? Excellent. Okay. George Thomas?
Thank you for having me, sir.
Whoa, 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 hang on. Don't do anything.
Thank you. Gotcha.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me.
Oh, one, one second.
Yes, sir.
We're going to do a two-minute timer. Can we get that up on the screen? Okay, great. Okay. Take it away, sir.
Okay. I've been in Baltimore for 25 years, retired Navy. I came here to work at Hopkins, was an aviator and a submariner, and I have a pretty good idea about sound. I also worked for the Department of Homeland Security after I, after I retired from Hopkins, where I looked at borders, and we were also looking at how sound traveled both underwater and underground. I am the owner of Wilson House. It is a registered national landmark, it's on the corner of Reservoir and Mount Royal Terrace. I'm right on the freeway. There is about a 30 to 40-foot drop right in front of my house, which may well give me a sound short, and I may have significant vibration coming into my house if they do put that antenna, that tunnel under my house. They also have, the vent is right across the freeway from my house, and I'm told those vents are very loud, and I'm very concerned about that. We've been in business now since 2004. We've contributed over a million dollars of, we've paid taxes on over a million dollars of income at that place. It was derelict when we bought it. We spent $350,000 immediately, bringing it up to code, so we could open it as a reward-winning bed and breakfast. My wife is very good at it. I write the checks, she runs the business. But we are very, very concerned. And is there any legal remedy if they in fact have a, have a problem that does cause my house to fall down eventually, or become unlivable, which I think is a very real possibility? And I'm not a wild-eyed crazy, I'm a scientist. And I haven't studied this system, but I have in fact conferred with people that have, and they tell me I have a real reason to be concerned. They're saying, probably talking with somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 to shore my house up, to make it vibration-proof. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Kim Forsyth?
Hi, good morning or good afternoon by this time. Hi, my name is Kim Forsyth. I just wanted to give you a reflection of where, why I'm here. I'm here on multiple, for multiple roles. One is that I am a resident and owner. Two is that I was asked by the city council to chair a task force in 2018 to survey the neighborhood regarding the use of 2001 Park Avenue, and I am a member and was a member of that review panel that awarded the property. And I also serve on that review panel. Nothing has happened in the last two years. This was put on hold, we're not sure why, we were told it was just put on hold. I'm also president of the Mount Royal Terrace Historic District. I am also president of the Lady Baltimore Park. This runs through both of those. And I am an expert in municipal analysis. I was director of the Lake Mason and Alex Brown Municipal Research Department, and wrote the guide to Baltimore City and Baltimore County, Maryland County bonds. So my point is, I'm here today to talk about the fact, very quickly, that I think the impact of this tunnel has not been measured precipitously, and the fact that there are two sections, 106 and 110, of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. That makes requirements of Amtrak that have not been fulfilled, and the decision upon which something is to be based, being made before the role, the information that's to be provided, obviously is a conflict. The path of least resistance is often the path that is chosen for easiest reasons, and this obviously has been one because there was a lack of information to this community. There is a property at 2001 Park Avenue that is on the National Register of Historic Places. We also believe, and there was a report released to the city, there is a copy that I have that we've provided many times, that there are slaves and Indians buried under that property in the dell that will be affected by this tunnel. The information of the planning department is obviously, was obviously naive, because we issued a request for proposals that did not mention any of that information, and as a licensed Realtor, I can tell you that you are required to, to issue that information anytime you're selling a property. So, review of that burial site in that dell is critical. That's a national historic property. This area was owned by Charles Carroll, who signed our Declaration of Independence. It has a huge amount of history in our neighborhood and in our city. It will be dramatically affected, it's a masonry property, by the vibration of that, of that tunnel. The person who served with me on that committee and wrote that survey at the request of the city council is Paul Getner. He's a licensed architect. He did, and I will just hold this up, and people can find it if they want...
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. He did a survey and a suggestion to alter the path along a yellow area along North Avenue, which is the existing area. Where it goes, they claimed it had, the reason they weren't doing that is because of depth problems and grade problems. That seems very impossible, because of the fact that it's in that current area where the existing tunnel is. And that would then avoid a reduction in property values, damage to the neighborhood. I will say one last thing, and that is that this neighborhood is going through the roof in terms of its value and its popularity. And the city of Baltimore has made very, a lot of short-sighted decisions in planning. I will just mention Route 40, which is now considered highway to nowhere. The Howard Street Light Rail was an historically antique row, drew people from around the country, now is, is a dead space. And the West North Avenue Corridor, the city allowed the developer who's opposite this property to fence its area, and it's not, it's not used now, it's not a popular area. So, I know. It has to be, I'm speaking on behalf of four different entities, so that's why. It has to all be considered in terms of the long, once we make this decision, it's done. We've made this decision on Boston Street with Canton and many other places. The impact will be forever. We will not get this back. So I hope we seriously consider this, because this neighborhood is going crazy, and we're seeing this improvement, and we need to see it continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'm going to call you next, because I know you had a schedule constraint. State your name when you get up, please.
Hi, I'm Angel St. Jean. I'm a resident at 606 Reservoir Street and a member of the Historic Mount Royal Terrace Community Association. My colleagues and neighbors will talk about a lot of the specifics of the project that are problematic, from environmental to financial, et cetera. But I really want to talk to city council... to financial, et cetera. But I really want to talk to city council and our department representatives here. City council, who is elected by the citizens of Baltimore to represent us, put here to represent us and our needs, asking you to not allow public property that we as taxpayers support to be used in a way that is against our interests. We, as a community, have been fighting for our rights for this project for almost a decade. We have spent a lot of time in hearings and meetings to talk about this, because it affects where we live. Our concerns have not been sufficiently addressed, and step by step has been taken, chipping away at our voice and our ability to have a real voice, not just the legal right to speak for two minutes at a hearing, but our voices about our concerns of what's happening to the investments that we made in this city when we bought our homes a decade ago. We are expecting our elected officials to protect and represent our rights in this, not the rights of, you know, some big entity. The value of voting is not just putting a piece of paper into a machine, but to engage with you in this political process, and not, again, to just legally be heard, but to have our voices matter. This project is inequitable. No one has stood up for our rights in this process thus far. Our federal and our state elected officials have failed us. And city council, you are one of our last stands in this matter. We want you to do what we elected you to do, which is to represent us and our needs. We ask that you do not support these pieces of legislation and force Amtrak to do what they haven't done thus far, which is to go back to the drawing board in order to get public land from the city to do this equitably or not at all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna provide a point of clarification here, that these bills were not introduced by the city council. These came from the administration. That's the mayor. So I just want to be clear.
No, I know how they get introduced, but we're here for city council.
Well, no, because the council, because the council can introduce bills too. The bills we're talking about today were introduced by the mayor's administration. I just want to, so everyone's clear on that.
But you have a voice to say, like, whether this can proceed or not.
We certainly do have a voice, but while we're on that note, let me, let me make sure that we do not conflate representation with agreement. Representation is listening. Just because, and I don't know enough about this as to how I'm gonna vote, but I frequently hear that argument made in council chambers. There's an implication that if we don't vote the way that someone wants, then we're not representing them. That's, those are two entirely different things.
I don't think they are. I mean, if, if we elected...
There are people that support an issue and oppose an issue.
Sure.
Now, you can listen to both people who support and oppose, and make a decision, and have represented both parties. It is impossible to please anyone, and I just want to, like, want people to understand that, that, like, this job is not binary. It's not...
Yeah, I'm fully aware of the political process. What I'm trying to say is that of the people who are here representing the community, I'm pretty sure it is not a single person saying, "We support this." So in terms of the ones who elected and who pay taxes in this city, there are not many people that support this project. I haven't heard of one to say that they have. It is the people in the community against Amtrak and Amtrak's interests. So, not supporting what the community is saying, supporting what Amtrak wants, not what the community wants. Amtrak does not vote for city council. We vote for city council. So that is the point that I'm trying to make.
Totally correct, and I don't doubt any of what you said. I'm merely stating that it is possible to represent people and still disagree with them and effectively listen.
Yeah, I mean, you can disagree, but if you're representing what the community wants, then I, I think there's a clear distinction between your opinion about a matter and what the community who you represent, who put you into the office, has to say. We don't have to agree on the same things, but whether you're representing your own interest or your own opinion versus the people who voted for you, those are two different things.
Thank you. Ken Keandra Pryor?
Good evening. I'm Keandra Pryor, and I'm the president of the Reservoir Hill Association. I'd like to make note that the right to notice and opportunity to respond in a meaningful manner to the bills proposed today were bridged, because nowhere in the bills is Amtrak nor the National Railroad Passenger Corporation made the recipient of these public, made clearly the recipient of these public lands. We were, we would like the opportunity to deliberate whether the condemnation of these lands serves public interests, which is a hallmark of not only city code, but eminent domain law. We are not asking you to inherently delay your vote on these bills. Delaying an injustice is still an injustice. You must vote and vote in opposition to the proposed bills. No amendment or delayed vote can rectify the injustice of this tunnels project violation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. We beg for you to allow FRA to make a decision, since they oversee Amtrak. Why would the city council vote in support of bills that would make the city liable for future civil rights litigation? Amtrak clearly believes it can utilize a combination of intimidation, false evocation of eminent domain law, and utilize public land for its own convenience. However, we agree with Chairman Comer and the House Committee of Oversight and Accountability, who has demanded documentation for the claim of eminent domain rights on Union Station. Amtrak has even failed to respond to its own federal government. Amtrak must demonstrate the difference between what is necessary and what is convenient. The proposed bills are convenient for Amtrak, but they are not necessary to the public. Amtrak has failed to demonstrate that the IVF or the intermediate ventilation site, which will rest upon the proposed lands, are necessary for the public in cases of emergency. By its own admission, Amtrak claims that the IVF will hardly ever be used, and that will only serve the passengers in case of an emergency. If this is the case, how does it serve the public interest? What we do know about the IVF is that it will cause public harm. It will vent particulate matter into the community and next to one of our 21st century schools. Amtrak has a burden to explain why every single alternative is factually impossible, not simply inconvenient to the company and its shareholders. They worry about the damage of tunneling beneath the 150-year-old tunnel, but it has little regard to the damage that it will cause to city infrastructure and to our residents. Amtrak was explorer possibilities that have been utilized throughout Europe, where they have dug under 150-year-old Swedish metro system. If they can figure out how to tunnel beneath buildings that are over 200 years old, that they have no idea of their infrastructure or their plans, surely they can figure out how to tunnel under their own tunnel. And I will not talk about Section 106 or 110, because my wonderful colleagues have already done so, so I'll focus on the letters that we have received from Ms. Gatlin on behalf of Amtrak. They have sent numerous letters to community members offering purchases of their subterranean rights that are well below the value that state, the state of Maryland has enumerated. Letters asking for their land rights are completely in disregard to the actual value of our property. Make no mistake, there are no two sides to this issue. A vote for this bill is a vote for injustice. The city council has a unique opportunity to plan for the future of Baltimore's infrastructure while protecting the rights of its citizens. The decisions that you make, and you have made many, many, many bad decisions that have impacted our community over the last hundred years, but the decisions you make today can continue that precedent, and we're asking you to stop it instead. Thank you.
Thank you. Rolando Maxwell?
Good afternoon. I had no intention of having anything to say. I was hoping that you would allow our individual to have the opportunity to speak for more than two minutes. I think it's unfair right now for you to just tell us that we only have two minutes for issues that is very important to the residents of this community from West Baltimore straight across, that is starting to the end, to Penn State. Okay? I made a couple of notation, but I want to ask a simple question first. Maybe you all had some physics sometime before in your education. What's the shortest distance between two points? See, anyone want to answer that?
We're not gonna engage in back and forth, but...
Okay, all right. So let me answer that question.
I think the answer is a straight line.
That's all right. I'll answer the question. For my study in physics is that the shortest distance is a straight line. So explain to me why Amtrak decided to give us a big curve in this design, and they have other studies. We live in an environment today in where global warming is a problem. They said they have a study that was done in 2017. Okay? It's exactly seven years and several months. They talk about the debt. They can't even give us a definition of, oh, deep. They want to put the body holes under our property. They go from 20 feet to 100. But when you ask them, "What is the debt?", nobody can give you a question. They also stated, that modern technologies state that, "Oh, we wouldn't have no problem with our structure." But would they put it in writing? I live in a old building that's over 100 and something years old. I invested a lot in that property. There's no way what they are located would ever fix the property if there was damage. We went to a meeting, public meeting, two weeks, last two meeting ago, sometime in July. Can't remember clearly. They talk about this monitor at the meeting. The gentleman couldn't even explain how the monitor worked. So how can I trust him to ever answer any question? When you ask them a question, basically all it says, "Oh, we refer it." There are people in the community who have asked a question, and have no time of day ever responded. They talk about having a conversation. Basically, there's no conversation. It's either my way or their way. I think you all need to take a time and go and talk to the people that will be affected to find out, "Oh, Amtrak treat them." Okay? The fact that we are minority, we're black, doesn't mean that we are ignorant, or we're stupid. So please take in consideration that they don't even have the decency to talk to your people, people that vote you all in, in a decent manner and respectful position. There was mention of demolition. If the council wished, I can share you all some video of how this demolition that was happening and not having, was a complete disaster. The barrier that they set up was being collapsing due to the improper, insecure way in which they was doing this demolition. And worst of all, it was done, and the school was not even notified that they was doing this demolition. Please take in consideration that we have kids that was monitoring across in the street. So, do you really want to tell me time? Because I can go back and tell you how much time you gave everybody, because I'm keeping record. I'm aware of it. Thank you very much.
No, 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 no. I'm gonna address that. So, yes, I do want to tell you that it's time. I've given this indication to everyone the first time that they've gone past their time. I'm merely extending a courtesy to you and letting you know that you're past time. I didn't even verbalize it. I just pointed at my watch. That's all. I'm doing the same thing I did for everyone else. I'm trying to make sure that we run a fair hearing and that everyone's voice is heard. I haven't heard any feedback from anyone else in the room that we haven't explained the process that we're gonna go through today, lay out the ground rules. We've been very upfront about that. I'm just letting you know you're past your time. Please continue and wrap up.
Can I say something? In the other hearing, you did not put up a clock. You did not put up a clock, sir.
When?
In the other hearing that you had before, every other person that spoke before this particular hearing.
Okay.
You did not put up a clock.
There is a clock up now on this display.
So are you saying there's a double standard when it comes to the minority community or the West Baltimore community, that no, you want to put up a clock?
No, 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 no.
Sir, you know what? I will end my conversation here.
Sir, 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 sir.
Have a good day.
Sir. There was a clock up on this screen that I could see, and I do not appreciate the insinuation that different communities are being treated differently.
Insinuation, sir. It's just what just happened in my prison.
Sir.
Okay?
I merely pointed at my watch.
I know there's two minutes.
As an indication to please wrap up. That is, is nothing...
You had said that in several things. You could have said that. Okay? But you know what? I will not go no further into this. You have a nice day. So make sure I go and do your work.
Maria Salami?
Hello. My name is Maria Soladat Salameh. I'm a member, a resident of Reservoir Hill for 37 years. I'm part of several boards, Residents Against the Tunnel, and I oppose the Bill 240562 through 24566. As a resident of Reservoir Hill, I'm deeply concerned about Amtrak plans to build 2-4 tunnels under our neighborhood, especially so considering that for the past five years, Amtrak has steadily fastly ignored our community's request for pertinent information that would ally our concerns over architectural, environmental, safety, and quality of life issues. So-called community outreach events on Amtrak part have garnered only platitudes, and we, and we know what's best for you disdain to our attempts at getting answers to relevant and significant infrastructure questions. Questions of possible adverse economic effects to our homes and community, as well as septic legal concerns, are met with talk of eminent domain condemnation and silence. Residents of our neighborhoods have worked long and hard to create thriving, vibrant communities. We deserve the respect our efforts afford. We're still waiting for answers. Selling off city land rights prematurely without further research, transparency, and accountability, assuming you have the same lack of information as our constituents, would, I believe, be short-sighted with unintended and possible adverse consequences to still fragile communities. Therefore, I respectfully request that the council oppose these bills at least until further details are made available pending stricter scrutiny and throughout updated reports. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Lisa Ward?
Hi, my name is Lisa Ward, and I'm a new resident in Reservoir Hill. Since, in the past year, I've been repeatedly asking Amtrak, "Are we on the alignment? Are we on the alignment?" And Amtrak's response has always been no. Two weeks ago, we got a letter that was to the contrary, advising us that they were going to tunnel underneath our home. This was a violation of federal law. Our community of Reservoir Hill has never, ever been engaged by Amtrak. It's not an option. Amtrak doesn't get to choose whether or not they get to consult with us. It's a requirement. It's actually federal law. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act requires Amtrak to consult with our neighborhoods that are adversely affected. They knew they wanted to build an intermediate ventilation facility in our literal backyards, right next to an elementary school in a district that has the second highest rate of pediatric asthma. Did they engage with the community? No. They knew they were gonna tunnel under our homes. Did they engage with us then? No. They literally kept Reservoir Hill out of the loop. The first notification for our neighbors was this past two... The first notification for our neighbors was this past two weeks on a project where they have a program agreement from 2017. When they illegally purchased the former Madison Park Medical Center, did they consult with us? When they violated federal law, did they engage with the community? That building was purchased illegally. And everything that Amtrak did thereafter was illegal. They're not supposed to receive any licenses, any permits under 36 CFR Part 800, which is the implementation of the, section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to please wrap up.
If you vote in favor of these bills, you don't represent my interest as a constituent. You represent Amtrak's interests. Amtrak has an abysmal record when it comes to federal laws. And if you ignore Amtrak violating federal laws, then you too violate federal law. And federal law is going to mean something or it's not. But our community intends to see that it does.
Thank you, ma'am. Joe Ward? Jay Ward? Maybe Joe.
Good afternoon. I'm testifying on behalf of my daughter, Carson Ward.
Can you, sir, you pull the mic up? Get a little closer. There you go.
And she's the Baltimore and Potomac Working Group Chair of Reservoir Hill. And I'm going to just expound on some of the things that she's asked me to talk about. I think it's important for us as citizens of this city to understand that you're here to represent the interest of all the people in the city. And part of that is doing your job and saying no when you should be saying no. Amtrak, you know, you can't say that it doesn't matter whether you pass this bill or not because all Amtrak can do is take their property by eminent domain because Amtrak has a really poor history in that regard as far as their eminent domain. They're currently under investigation by the Ways and Means Committee where they have a, as I, no, no, excuse me, the House Committee of Oversight and Accountability in which they have been accused of asserting use of eminent domain, not for necessity, but as a means of their own convenience because it makes their job easier. That's not why you have federal laws is to make your job easier. Federal laws are supposed to be things that you have to abide on and Amtrak has a dismal record in regards to that. The House and Ways Committee, passing, excuse me, even in the congressional hearings around Amtrak's use of eminent domain in other jurisdictions, they were found to have a blatant disregard for the law. And I think that's pretty impaired with how they've approached this project. They've approached this project where they're supposed to get the residents of the affected neighborhoods. And the only residents that they really got their community outreach from was the surrounding neighborhoods to Reservoir Hill, the wider and the more established and more richer jurisdictions than Reservoir Hill who they've ignored. That's why there's a civil rights complaint filed against them. And for you to consider legislation, passing legislation when there's pending litigation to assert the civil rights of the people who live in this community, saying that Amtrak is trampling upon their rights and not giving them the due process, not giving them their 106 rights because under Chapter 106, they're really ignoring that. They need to be abiding by what those rules require, which is to protect the historic preservation of Reservoir Hill. All of these are very historic homes and Amtrak is coming along with that.
Please.
Yes, you can. I think it's important for us to realize that you have the right to say no. That's your job in our view as citizens of this city. Protect the rights of the people who are elected, have elected you to these positions. With that, I'll stop.
Thank you, sir. Michael, last name begins with a K, Cotton. He spoke? Okay. Oh, he left. Okay, thanks. George Thomas?
Already spoke, sir.
Already spoke. Thank you, thank you. Keandra Kim. Did we do Robin Williams yet? Come on up.
Thank you.
Quite welcome.
Thanks so much. It's an honor to be here. Is that better? Okay. It's a beautiful building. It's an honor to be here. Thank you so much. My name's Robin Williams. I'm a resident of Reservoir Hill. I am a board member for Residents Against the Tunnel, also called RAT, and a member of the Reservoir Hill Association. And I am opposed to Bills 24-0562, 63, 64, 65, 66. I've lived in Reservoir Hill for more than 20 years and I know and I love my neighborhood. Amtrak has not been transparent about the BMP Tunnel Project, which is a plan to build tunnels in Reservoir Hill that run passenger and freight trains with toxic freight permitted in my neighborhood under our 100-year-old houses, our 100-year-old historic homes. They have not done a proper update for the EIS that would identify some of the questions brought up by the Ways and Means Committee as far as I'm concerned, that would identify how this would impact my house, which sits in the neighborhood above the tunnels that are going to be bored. No one's paying attention to the harm to my neighborhood with a brand-new, beautiful community school that I was a part of building, Dorothy I Height Elementary. I'm worried the vibrations and construction will damage my house, which is my legacy for my daughter. It is all that I have to give her. And I worked very hard to get it. And I'll continue to fight for it for her because it is her legacy. Our leaders, our city leaders, I don't feel, I don't think you have a good pulse on this project and its effect on the city, on the neighborhood, on the children in this neighborhood. Please help us, do the right thing. Stop this tunnel from going through our thriving neighborhood. Choose another pathway if you have so much money. There's so many new plans for our neighborhood. And once construction starts, to talk in five, 10 years, this project does not fit our neighborhood. One of the construction sites that has been brought up today is a ventilation facility directly across the street from Dorothy Height Elementary. Throw a stone, you'll hit the school. And I believe Dorothy I Height is scheduled, because I heard in the community that they are...
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay, thank you. Dorothy I Height is scheduled to receive kids from Utah Marshburn, which is down Utah, because it's going to be closed. So then you're going to have even more of our babies walking past five to 10 years' worth of construction and dust in the neighborhoods. It just doesn't seem like there's enough communication. Our kids deserve better. We've worked hard. We built the new schools. That's the opposite of what this is. 21st century never included having our kids walk through possible toxic fumes with 10-plus years of construction. Amtrak, they call it the Frederick Douglass. They didn't ask us about that. He would be appalled, I believe. I'm so disappointed. And this is going to hurt our community. Destroy our homes, the places where we walk and play. We need our leaders who love the people of Baltimore to please help. Get together, make sure you understand exactly what they're talking about doing. You'll see the shortcuts in the railroading that took place, not the answers to our critical questions. You owe it to our communities and especially to the children in these neighborhoods. Smokestacks next door is not the move for our children who are the future of this city, this country, and this world. They deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Darnell Schaefer? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Darnell Schaefer. I am a Reservoir Hill resident and also a Reservoir Hill Association member. It's difficult to address the length of concerns of this project in two minutes, so I'll just mention a few. While we understand that infrastructure investments are important, this project as currently designed has clear legal and environmental risks that disproportionately harm my neighborhood. The environmental hazards posed by the ventilation facility that has come up a few times already near Dorothy I Height Elementary are alarming. Though Amtrak claims that the facility's emissions are not of a concern for us, the high rates of asthma and respiratory issues among children in Baltimore, especially black children in Baltimore who already suffer from severe health disparities render this project even more dangerous. The planned placement of a ventilation facility directly across the street from this elementary school is unacceptable. Not to mention the lack of cooperation from Amtrak to engage with the community on an emergency preparedness plan. God forbid there is a catastrophe due to this project and something happens underneath our homes. It will be us, the residents, not Amtrak, that will bear the heaviest burden. Residents have already filed a civil rights complaint with the U.S. DOT over disparate harm for this tunnel project. Amtrak has alternatives, including less harmful and discriminatory options, but instead chooses to pursue with a plan that will disrupt the neighborhood's progress, stability, and public health. So I urge the city council to stand up and exhaust every legal means to, every legal means possible to fight on behalf of its residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Francine Brown? You don't have to testify, you can. You're on the list? Okay.
Okay. I'm Francine Brown and I am a proud resident of Baltimore City. And as I have said to anybody who will listen, if I move out of Baltimore City, I'll probably move out of the country. So I stay here, I pay those outrageous taxes. I'm grateful that I'm able to do that, but I'm a city girl, West Side. I grew up on Woodbrook Avenue, Monroe Street. I raised my son on Reservoir, excuse me, on Whitlock Street. And I have met wonderful new neighbors and I am very supportive of keeping our community safe. I bought my property back in the 1900s, 1980. As a young person, I saw the community change. I would never sell my property. It is a legacy for my grandchildren. I want them to be safe, to be protected. I want that ground to be intact in another 100 years. So I'm here to support my fellow Reservoir Hill and Upper Utah community, and I trust that you all will do the right thing. And I love Amtrak. The train is my favorite way to travel. So we have to come to some kind of happy medium where we all get what we want and deserve.
So, I want Kim Lynn. Ms. Frida? Frida? Frida Fanning? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Frida. I live on 2100 block of Mount Royal Terrace next to my neighbor George in the Wilson House. I moved to Baltimore from California in the early 90s. I went to Morgan State University volleyball scholarship. Go Bears! And somehow in college, I found Historic Reservoir Hill. I found my neighborhood and I said, one day I'm going to live there. And I remember driving around the street, looking at the houses, and then ended up moving next to one of the people that I would see watering their plants. We purchased our home. I have three children. We purchased it when I had three under three. I actually fired my first realtor because she thought the lead in the homes would be terrible for my children. I was like, we can figure that out. And we did. We bought our house from the C2s. They moved to Cape May and we were able to go visit them in their home in Cape May. It was just wonderful. Our neighbors are amazing. I never thought I would have the community that I have today. Then I hated the fact that we bought this old house because we sit right in front of 83 and 83, our house, shifts. I have plaster that breaks in our home. We have to pay to get our walls redone on the inside. It's historic, so I pay a lot of money to have our house done on the outside, going through chaff, the way it's supposed to be. But honestly, I mean, it's a love-hate relationship. If you own a home, you know. But I do love my neighborhood. And now with Amtrak going under our home, I love Baltimore, I support Baltimore. I mean, when I moved here, the harbor was not the harbor that it is today. So any type of improvement in our city, I'm going to support it. At the same time, like many of my neighbors have said earlier today, the way that they're going about it isn't the right way. I mean, my house is affected by 83 and you cannot tell me that you're going to dig 115, 75, between 75 and 115 feet below my home, that my house is not going to be affected. I've never talked to anybody from Amtrak. No one has come and set up any type of infrastructure, this woman said that they did to check the measurements. And again, I believe you asked the question, the last time it was measured was in 2017. My house, my street, my sidewalk, we have a cobblestone or brick on our sidewalk that is uneven and has shifted. My front stone stairs porch has shifted in the 10 years, over 10 years that I've had my home. Thank you. I'm wrapping it up. So again, I will support whatever will make Baltimore better, but we need to hold these people accountable that they're actually reaching out and talking to residents and doing what they're telling you they're doing. I haven't talked, seen anyone in my neighborhood. No one has knocked on our door. My husband and I, we own our property. No one has come to our home and said, hey, can we set this up and measure shifting movement? Any of the things that this woman had in her three-minute presentation. It's untrue and I'm here to support my neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Plymouth? Saw Paul earlier, I think he left. We did Darnell Schaefer. Okay, we got everyone who signed in. Has anyone who wishes to testify not testified yet? I, yeah, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who has not testified? Okay. So we are now going to go into recess. Before we go into recess, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to the members of the public. As your representative on this council, I hear you. I say that wholeheartedly as a son of East Baltimore representing West Baltimore. I know that... I know that this city is growing. There are pains before us. I too have a young child who plays in German Park. I too recognize that there are young people who are leaving from Madison Park, as well as Sandtown Winchester, and other neighborhoods to venture to Dorothy I. Height. I recognize young people who are coming from Pain North who go to Dorothy I. Height. I have my reservations with the Amtrak project. I say that as someone who recognizes that I have a little person, who I just found out just yesterday, is four foot one at five, right? But will a car be able to see him as he enters or goes past to walk to Dorothy I. Height because of the increased traffic that will come from the development that's happening? I think about the fact that there are a number of young people, like my sister, who grew up in Baltimore, who have, who are asthmatic. I think about the fact that there is already a ventilation system that is just to the east of 83. And then there will be another ventilation system right in this neighborhood. I call that a sandwich. If something does happen, even though it's less than 1%, that something will happen, it is still the, I call it the ghost, I hate to relate it to this, because of the conversations we've had about the interest and distrust of government. We call it the ghost of Jim Crow's past, as we call it, because we were always fearful where government intended to be and would have actually impacted us as people of color. I think that I want to actually thank Councilman, Council President Mosby and I, we teamed up on this, because we felt that delaying would help us get more answers for our community. It has, but that's not enough for us, because there are still questions that need to be answered. I'm happy that we have commitments from you to get additional answers, as well as to discuss the things that are impacting our neighbors, as well as the sales offers. I'm still have my reservations, because I ultimately have walked their neighborhood, whether it be the, my neighbors in Sandtown Winchester or my neighbors in Reservoir Hill. I know the historic impacts, every property, that every person has a story for. I could tell you that in one of the areas in which we are doing the sale, Calte Cullen actually met with people and set on their steps to discuss his actual writings, right? Baltimore is a historically beautiful place. I, a lot of people don't know, I have in my office a picture of Harriet Cummings, the first African-American councilperson, elected in 1890. I have him there to remind me of two things. As a person of color, we are required to, in the systems that we were given, to advocate in a way that, a manner that advances not only our persons, but our people. I say that as a steward and a son of Charles Hamilton Houston, and the reason why I got my law degree is because we have to be social engineers. I'm thankful that we've come a mighty long way, going away from diesel to electric, that you have allowed us to lower the height of the tunnel so that freight doesn't go through it. You've heard the voices, but there are still answers that need to be heard. I'm not, I am unafraid to say that there has been progress, but I'm afraid that there is not enough progress so that we can make people feel comfortable that they can live next door to this project. I recognize that you brought experts. I recognize that we've had these conversations, some great, some not so great. But I recognize that this is the hard part about governing, but the hard part about being people, that there are a lot of hard questions that need to be answered. There are a lot of injustices and assistance we're creating. I say that because I recognize that I have people in Sandtown who don't, who may not benefit from the sale of any of their properties, because they don't own the ground beneath their home. Something that was created in the 1800s through the colonial system is blocking a Black and Brown family to benefit from any sale that is of the property beneath them. And if you look at it, some of the people who actually who own those ground rent don't live in the city of Baltimore. They actually came through and bought it from a faraway land. So I think about that, and I'm happy that you're willing to help us navigate that, so that we are not righteously looking past what is due to people who look like me in those neighborhoods. But I also recognize that we have to recess this hearing so that we can start the hard work of getting additional answers for these groups, Groups 1 and 4. Then we have to discuss Groups 2 and 3 next. But I just want to make sure that this is not an endless conversation as we move forward, and that I wish to make sure that you aren't of the commitments that you had in terms of addressing the concerns in terms of the sales, as well as addressing, providing more technical questions for the ventilation shaft in the coming weeks, because those are things that are important. Because what I do want to recognize is that there are updated designs that we're still waiting, that you said you would provide, that you have done last night in your meeting that you discussed about the ventilation shaft and others. So I recognize the hard conversation that happened last night, the one that will happen at Culver, I believe this evening or tomorrow night. But I think that, if you heard from my neighbors, there are still answers that need it. And I pledge to my neighbors, both publicly as well as my councilmembers, to use whatever power I have here in this body to get, continue to get those answers. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're, the if and when subsequent hearings on these, these six legislative matters are scheduled, they will be announced on the city council website. You can reach out to Councilman Torrance to inquire as to if and when that will be. We are now in recess. Thank you.